All right, are we ready to get fired up, Mr. Dines? There we go. All righty, welcome everybody to the 14th May edition of the King George County Planning Commission. For the record, there is a forum. And this is 14 May 2024. You are not looking back in time. I am chair again for some odd reason. So anyway, again, for the record, we have a forum. If you cannot, I ask you please stand and recite the pledge of allegiance with us. Lead us in invitation, please. By our heads.
Father, we thank you, dear Lord, for allowing us to gather in this place. The Lord has to protect us divine as we depart. We move to part of this place. The Lord has to give us clear minds and hearts as we make decisions for the camp. Be with us in the blessing and in the purging.
All righty. Now, we do. This wears a little slight shift in the lineup up here. Mr. Moss's term expired. He was chair. He decided not to reenlist, if you will, so that made me chair again and that left vice chair position open. So at this point, I'd like to defer to the board members for the election of, well, one nomination of and then subsequent voting for an election of a vice chair. Don't everybody jump. I think, I think we got, Mr. Mr. Wiggins has nominated himself. Do we hear a second? Thank you. Got a second? All in favor? Motion passes? Thank you. That was quicker and easier than I thought it. Pleasure to serve. All right. Next item on the agenda is public comment. At this point, if anybody would like to speak, please perch the podium, state your name and address. Comments limited to three minutes per person. Please do afford everybody an opportunity to speak. And if comments relate to any specific item that we have later this evening, we ask you to hold those comments for that time. Although I don't believe we have any public hearings, that's cool. At this point, hey, how are you doing, sir?
Yes, sir. Director of Parks and Recreation here in my official capacity, giving this chair members permission. On March 12th, when we stood here and presented the capital improvement plan during that discussion, this lightly brought up the fact that the picnic shelter park was inaccessible mostly by part of any of our citizens that have been vulnerable. I will come here today to report that within 60 days, government actually worked kind of quickly. We have a five-foot section of sidewalk connects from the parking lot to the playground. Four foot wide, two four-foot wide sections of play sidewalk connect from the parking lot to the picnic shelter. There is a little bit of cleanup work we need to do with fencing, but we heard you and we listened and we got it done in 60 days.
Excellent. Thank you. Very good. Okay, anybody else? Mr. Dines, do we have anyone online that would like to?
No, Mr. Chairman. Hello? Hello? Do you hear us from online?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
This is Hollis Polk. I had questions about the 2050 updated rural long-range transportation plan as well as the FAMPO long-range plan mitigation projects for 2035. I was looking to find out if there had been any discussion for how the the plans that are laid out, those are going to affect the residents that live off of 218. In particular, on the stretch between 206 and Basser Drive, where the 2050 updated plan was stating their intentions to widen the road with paved shoulders. But I was also wondering, because between the 2035 plan and the 2050 plan, it looked like the 2035 plan was stating that the intention was to widen 218 from 206 to the Stafford line to four lanes. But then in the 2050 plan, it almost sounds like it's superseding that, but only stated that it would be the two lanes with paved shoulders. I was wondering if there's been a discussion about when county residents along 218 are going to get notified of how those plans are going to be impacting their homes and properties.
I'll actually defer this one. Mr. Stewart, would you like to take this one? We want to talk about this later.
Mr. Chairman, I would actually have to look into that and get back. I'm not aware of those.
Yeah, and and Mr. Polk, I got your email today and I apologize that I've been a bit busy too. I I have no chance to look into it, but I am also not aware of it. I would, I would tell you, I think I can say it's not been brought before the county, not before this board or the board of supervisors or the office planning. So I'd say, I'd say we don't know much about it right now. We'll look into it and circle back with you if that's okay.
That would be more than fine.
Mr. Dines, anybody else online?
I'll wait a second first, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we're returning back to the planning, which we're in a discussion on the public. If there is none, then we will go on to our next item on the agenda, which is approval of the minutes of the 13th February meeting, which started the joint meeting and ended the joint meeting. Any comments on that? Let us know. We will note the record accordingly and make the changes to accompany. Hearing no, hearing no comments there, I move to any approved minutes. Which we made and seconded all in there. Abstentions, all right. Motion passes with one abstention, Mr. Williams. All right, now we'll move on to the minutes of the 12th. And commission meeting. I was supposed to go to the same.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We approve the March 12th.
Which were made. Seconded, made and seconded, all in favor? Abstentions, four abstentions, motion. Well, we got a tie. Minutes, fail or pass? I thought it would pass. Wait till somebody, wait, put it back next month, they would be able to know the 19th. How would we end up? These abstentions. I abstained because I was not here today. We have to get people that all abstained are not here. They will never change their vote. Well, they weren't here and we had a forum. Yeah, Mr. Moss, so with the members that are gone, we'd never be able to get to a positive vote on that, correct? Isn't it, isn't it considered the majority of those who were there? Based on the number that was present? So they, all the abstentions were people who were absent, correct? Mr. Chairman, with your absence, 12th? That's 12th, 12th. So it's four of us out. Four here. Four, and then Mr. Moss is our role. So, so again, you can only, only those who were there can vote, correct? Correct. So there were only five there, four of the three of them, yeah.
Also, staying is a non-vote. It's not a negative vote.
We have to have four positive votes, is that correct? So could we?
We'd have to have majority of that.
So could we post them in the record as? Or opposed without, without full approval or? Full table. That's okay. We'll look back and. All right, next item on the agenda, community planning, excuse me, community planning liaison officer naval sport activity, South Potomac, Mr. Lynch, what was yours, sir?
Evening. Thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you, Colin. Seems like it's always raining.
So a lot in the Navy world these days. Three items I wanted to discuss. One of them is the readiness and environmental protection integration program, AKA REPI. NSF Dahlgren has been in conversations with community partners, especially land trusts and other nonprofits, to submit a package of REPI funding requests that would set aside funding for B, simple purchase, or conservation easements to protect compatible uses in open spaces and admission affected areas of the private community outside NSF Dahlgren. So this year, the REPI submission includes three open space properties. All of them are in West Warland County. But these are all in areas that are on the northern neck side of the noise zones that emanate from the naval range. It goes down to the, those three properties total about 850 acres. And in the future, we look forward to packages that include more open space conservation in King George County. I know that's been a priority for your board of supervisors. So that's one thing that I think with a little more intentional dialogue, we could be more assertive and proactive about serving open spaces through the REPI program. And if you'd like, I'm happy to bring back some specific information about that program. I think certainly that we could probably collaborate. A shared goal to maintain those open space adabilities in areas that may be contingent on by development. Second, I was approached by a funder, Department of Defense funding, funding organization with the request that we consider re-upping our joint land use study. The last J-List was passed in 2015, 2016 time period. It's been almost 10 years. And it's important to re-up that joint land use study document. So I'm just going to suggest that we can start some conversations about scheduling the J-List update in George County. Now, there's some details that have to go into that. One is that a partner organization needs to be involved to lead the study. That typically is a municipality or a regional planning commission, or even in some cases, a nonprofit and all that. But regardless, there would need to be an organization or an agency that would take that, release RFP, recruit a consultant, and then oversee the consultant in partnership with other organizations, other agencies, such as NSF Dahlgren. So more to come on that. I will come back to our funder and and ask some more questions to see what their timeline and funding specification requirements are. And have more information for you guys. And third, the, there's been a change in commanding officer at NSA South Potomac. I'd like to introduce at a future meeting Christopher Schwartz, Captain Christopher Schwartz, is taking over as our CO, replacing Captain Wilson. We wish Captain Wilson the best in his future endeavors. And finally, I understand Mr. Stewart is going to be departing as your planning director. Maybe I blew the surprise here. But I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the Navy for your contributions to King George County and to NSF Dahlgren. You've done a great job in my experience stewarding the planning commission. And I understand really several years of great dialogue and relationship building with the Navy. So thank you for your, your poise and professionalism in what I know was a challenging role so young in your career. Thank you so much for what you've done and best of luck for you in the future. Happy to answer any questions from the commission.
Mr. Williams, could we ask who the funder is? Are you, are you, what would you say, who the funder for the J-List, maybe?
Yes, sir. The Office of Local Defense and Community Cooperation, OLCC, or O L D C C. Is a federal agency that distributes DOD funding for outside fence line off-base projects. That was the Office of Community, Office of Local Defense and Community Cooperation, OLCC.
Yeah. Other neighbors of funding opportunities.
Certainly. They fund a lot of different studies on the ground, project planning, some other projects that they they also oversee. They oversee the Defense and Community Infrastructure Program, D SIP, which is typically for shuffle-ready projects. It's often transportation improvements outside the fence line that help alleviate, for example, congestion or or increase multi-modal transportation access to the installations, as well as a program called the Military Readiness Review, M I R R. And that is a program that helps bases understand long-term climate resiliency impacts as well as other community integration projects.
For those of us that aren't interested, aren't aware or familiar with this study, would it be possible for you to send us a link to the previous existing study? So we can check better what's in the study.
Yes, sir. I'd be happy to. I will send that to Mr. Stewart and distribute to the rest of the It should be in a public forum already, but I will track it down and make sure that what you get is publicly distributed.
Also, some information on the REPI program. We haven't discussed that for a while. That was a long time ago. That program is basically the Dahlgren half of, of King George, right? You qualify for that or pretty much? I don't think it was all of King George, right?
So that's correct, sir. There are certain geographies that are eligible for REPI cross-chair. They tend to draw the boundaries pretty big, so, but noise zones, safety zones, and then a certain distance setback from the fence line are all eligible geographies. So I'd be happy to come back. And in fact, we could go through more of a more robust presentation if you'd like. But I'm still learning it. I'm seven months into the job and there's a lot that I still need to
That or even a link if they have.
I can now, I'll send those right ahead.
Now, Mr. Chair, you may consider nominating ourselves to be the J-List recommending, recommending to the board supervisor that the planning commission may be a subcommittee of the planning commission to take this as a, as a task. Just drive it home.
Good. I'm sorry, Mr. Lynch. I thought you were.
Oh, well, I, I was going to say, I, I don't think it's necessarily appropriate that we approach immediately because there's, there's some steps that should
I was going to say, do we need to?
On my side.
Sounds like you need to share up some, some funding and such first, right?
That's right. Yes. And and I want to make sure that this, you know, county has the capacity. If you, if the county is going to be the sponsoring, you know, applicant, the organization that runs the study, whether they have, you know, you guys have time in your schedule for it. There's, there's a lot that goes into it that that I need to make sure I do my homework before I come back to you.
Mr. Stewart, could you or somebody in your office check to see who led up the effort on the last J-List? I thought it was the county and I thought it was basically coming out of your office, the, you know, the day-to-day mechanics of it.
We can look into that. Mr. Lynch provides that link to me. I can incorporate that along. All right. Anything else, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate coming out on another rainy night. All right, plan review, we have done this evening. Public hearings, we also have done this evening. It brings us to whole business, which is the Capital Improvements Plan, FY 25 through 29 ranking. We all should have a big piece of placemat looking paper in front of us with the proposed rankings. And typically what we've done on these in the past, just go through them line by line. If anybody disagrees. Or don't we just, or can we just? What do we do at this point? I missed the last meeting.
I'll give a brief overview. So print it out before you. That is consensus. That was calculated by averaging your rankings we received after that public hearing. Before you send that final ranking to the board, we'll go essentially line by line to ensure that it was recorded accordingly. We didn't receive everybody's packets. They may be subject to adjustment. Currently, the draft ranking in your package shows as follows. Those are the urgent and ones to be funded next year. That is for the IT department. It's the computer replacement. For emergency services, they have the ambulance replacement program, fire and rescue facilities, as well as the aerial truck apparatus. And for the schools, we have the replacement sewer pump station and school bus replacement. So just as a reminder, projects that are considered to be urgent are ranked from one to two. Projects that are considered to be necessary, three to four, needed but not required, five to six, desirable, seven to eight, and future consideration, nine to 10. Take a pause if you have any questions. If not, I'll just start it off and go line through line.
Do you want to do it line by line, or would you rather do by exception to the record?
Everybody has exception.
I think in the interest of time, I'll go line by line. If anybody disagrees, has any questions or comments, just interject. We'll pause there and open up the floor for discussion. All right. Starting with the King George County schools. Number one is the athletic fields. That was ranked as a six. That is needed. Number two, the roof replacement. Staff consider that urgent. That was ranked as a three, which is necessary.
All right. Like to make a comment. So on two, three, and four, these are some pretty significant upgrades, repair type actions to the old King George Elementary, which, which houses the school board office. I I take exception to putting that so high upon the, or very high up on the list, simply because we still don't have a plan out of the schools or the county as a whole to what the facility plan is for all these things. I mean, we keep accumulating buildings that sit around and deteriorate. And we just don't know what we're doing with them. So I would hate to see the county put a whole bunch of money into the old King George Elementary School until we really know what we're doing with it, how much of it we're going to keep versus demolish, or whether we're going to demolish the whole thing. I'm okay with the idea of doing some repairs so that we can buy ourselves some time to figure that out. But that's, that's, that's going to turn into a lot of money into a building that I don't even know we need.
I guess my only pushback to that and why I rated this one a little higher is because this is a basic roof repair. And all of the other upgrades that they had, that they proposed for the school board office, I put as a much lower priority until we got the plan. Given the amount of time it takes to get any project done through the county, if we don't have a study and the roof is leaking, is, you know, they could end up with an unusable facility just because of water damage before we can even construct a new building and put them in a new location. So this was the only one of the several school board office updates that I thought was worthy of at least being considered as a high priority urgent issue. Because of the, it's preventing further damage. All of the other things are the things that are resulting because of damage, the plaster walls. Right? The windows, some of those things can certainly be, can be delayed. And I, and I agree with you. We need to push back and say, we need a comprehensive plan, whether we send that along with these recommendations.
I don't disagree with your logic. I guess I was looking at the title, which said roof replacement. I was thinking more of doing some repairs.
That's, if we want to push back and say that we could approve some repairs, but a complete roof replacement might be a stretch until we get a plan. I don't know. I don't know if these are all, are being through this the first time. I don't know if these are absolute upbound or we can put clauses and contingencies onto things.
At this stage, it would really pertain to the ranking of how you, how urgent you feel that it is.
But if that ranking came with some extra verbiage associated with it to give some guidance on it, it's not just, it's not just a number. Does it have to be just a number? Can it be a number with a, yeah, I don't, I don't, context?
I don't think we can change what it is, right? Because that was submitted via the, the school, school board. I, I do see the, a certain sense of urgency with sewer pump station from, from a number of levels. But I also agree with Mr. Kendrick that we, we're, we're collecting a lot of old buildings and and we're going to have more here as soon as the courthouse opens, right? So it's, we, we've got to figure out what to do with some of these places.
So is the sewer pump station, it was still working though, right? It was just, it needed to be replaced.
Oh, I got, I got the impression that it was about to fail. That, that's the way I walked away from the meeting. And I don't have any problems doing that. It's an imminent action.
If, if I remember the presentation, I did, I did watch the video of the meeting, even though I wasn't here when they did it. I thought they had talked about how there were components of that pump station that were not replaceable in its, they were, they were not repairable if they damaged it.
Give us the update.
As part of the migration is the user at the bottom where the pump station is, there was an incident this fall where it was failing and needed repairs. And we figured it out because the pit, Hunter Field, stunk.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you. So do you want to just take the roof and the sewer and make them threes and make everything else six on school, school board or six?
The roof is currently ranked as a three, which is necessary.
Right.
Looks like the recommendation.
We're on the roof and make them one number and make everything else another number.
Yes, I'll say.
I'm, I'm fine with this. Let me put it this way. I'm fine as long as this conversation goes on record and gets passed to the planet, to the board of supervisors so that they know at least my feelings about, we need to get the plan done. I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Nicely that there needs to be some repair work done at minimum to try to maintain the integrity of the envelope of the building. But I just want to go on record so that they can hear it.
Yeah, that was my point, Mr. Chair. If we can come up with some verbiage that comes with these recommendations, not just a blanket approval.
So these articles stated that we've moved six of the preschool classes from that building because it's deteriorating so quickly to King George Elementary School, which is now at capacity. I, I feel like the condition of the building, when you talk about plaster, it's not just for looks. It's probably covering asbestos. And, you know, we need to make sure that if we have children in that building, that we're making it safe. And if, if it's Band-Aids, it's Band-Aids. It doesn't look like a horrendous amount of money. But it's deteriorating so quickly that they, they've moved children out of the building already.
Again, I don't disagree with those comments. It's just, I haven't seen anybody other than the school board opinion of things, you know? If we could get some kind of a quick study done, even if it was by in-house folks in the county to assess just what the minimum or reasonable repairs were to, to, you know, to not be wasting a whole bunch of money, but at the same time, not to let the building deteriorate anymore than we can help. So that's what I'm after. And like I said, I'm, I'm fine with leaving the current score of six or three go for the sake of doing that, as long as the folks who are going to for the sake of doing that, as long as the folks who are going to give the money to the school board understand that, that aspect of it, does that make sense? So I agree that the pump needs to be replaced, so it having a three makes all sense in the world to me.
Before we jump too much.
Even higher.
Is it the consensus of the commission for the roof replacement remain as three, necessary?
Yep.
Try to find a way to, it's going to be in the minutes of this meeting, but maybe you could highlight that for them.
I can call it out for them. Move down to the number three, that is the replacement windows, is there a comment on that one as well? That's currently ranked as a six, which is needed. That would be for the same building, I believe. Any comments or objections, leave that six. All right, here none. Uh, number four, repair and replace deteriorating plaster walls, um, that is currently ranked as a six, which is needed. Number five, replace the nineteen sixty fire alarm, um, that is ranked as a four, which is necessary. Number six, the electrical upgrades, uh, currently ranked as a five, which is again needed. Number seven, replacement sewer pump station, um, that is ranked as a two, which is urgent. Number eight, school bus replacement was ranked as a two, which is also urgent. Number nine, school parking lots, that is ranked as a five, which is needed. Number ten, King George Middle School overlay roof, that was ranked as a three, which is necessary. Number eleven, refurbish and renovate VOTech, that was ranked as a seven, which is desirable. Number twelve, King George High School turf replacement was ranked as a five, which is needed. Number thirteen, all ES rubber ADA playgrounds, that was ranked as an eight, which is desirable. Number fourteen, all ES replacement playgrounds, that was ranked as a five, which is needed. Number fifteen, flooring replacement was ranked as a five, needed. Number sixteen, uh, PES replace sidewalks, also ranked as a five, which is needed. Number seventeen, SES new bathroom dash laundry room on second floor, that was ranked as a nine, which is for future consideration. Number eighteen, replacement of gym floor was ranked as a five, which is needed. Number nineteen, replace ramp and deck for modular classrooms, that was ranked as a four, which is necessary. Number twenty, front and loader backhoe was ranked as an eight, which is desirable. Twenty-one, one-ton dunk truck was al, was ranked as a seven, which is also desirable. Number twenty-two, the IT door access system, that was ranked as a nine, which is future consideration. Uh, number twenty-three, IT security systems, also ranked for future consideration at a nine. Number twenty-four, SBO storage facility was ranked as a seven, which is desirable. Number twenty-five, King George Middle School reseal dash resurface track was ranked as a nine, which is future consideration. Twenty-six, metal roof was ranked for future consideration at a ten. Twenty-seven, uh, PES replacement of exterior doors also ranked for future consideration at a nine. And then number twenty-eight, um, SES replacement gym floor, that was ranked for future consideration at a ten. Twenty-nine, um, replacement of air handlers was ranked as a seven, which is desirable. And then rounded off at number thirty, replacement of cabinetry was also ranked, um, for future consideration. Moving down to fire, rescue, and emergency services, their first request was for the ambulance replacement program, that was ranked as one, as an urgent. Number two, fire and rescue facilities, uh, that was ranked as a two, which is also urgent. And then their third and final one, an aerial truck apparatus, also ranked as a urgent at a two. Solid Waste and Recycling Department, their only request seals convenience center compact replacement is ranked as a three, which is necessary. General Properties, their only request was a new General Properties building, was ranked as a seven, which is desirable. Engineering Department, uh, number one, demolition of the old King George County Middle School was ranked as a three, which is necessary. Number two, renovation of existing courthouse was also.
I'd like to make a comment back on, on that last one, to go along with sort of Mr. Kendrick's comment here. Uh, until we get a plan of what we're doing with all of these buildings, I know the board supervisors are, seem to be pushing to try to get that old middle school torn down. But we don't know what we're going to do with that. We're just going to spend a lot of money to tear a building down and have an empty lot until we get a plan of what they plan to do with that. So I, I put, I personally think that is lower than a three in terms of priorities. Just my, my thoughts, without a plan, we're spending money to tear down a building and just have an empty lot.
Does anyone know if there are any underlying issues or, uh, problems as to why that, that is ranked so high?
From what I've heard in some of their other meetings and other things that I've attended, they've gotten comments from people about, oh, there's homeless people sleeping in there, and it's deteriorating, and we need to, they've had some complaints from people, you know, and they just want to tear it down. They, they see that as the one building that's sitting around that they want to get rid of, uh, that the county has. I don't know, I don't know how much money they're spending on it, on the county budget, I'm not looking at that level of detail, but those are the things that I've heard comments from them.
So I remember them talking about squatters trying to live into, in it. Uh, they also stated that basically all of mechanical, electrical systems, as well as the structure of the building had deteriorated past the point of use, but I tend to agree with you, is lock it, monitor it, and spend the money when we actually know what we're doing and make it part of the project.
Exactly, seal it up so that you can't get the squatters in there in some fashion. And let it set until we get a conference plan, what they plan to do with it. So I believe that's lower rated than what, than what the board overall rated it. I personally put that down, I believe, as a five.
So what would be the consensus of the commission, it sounds like it's to increase the number, currently it's ranked as a three, which is necessary.
It's my understanding that they, the board considers it a liability for safety, uh, illegal activity, vandalism. And so I think they just would like to, uh, remove any possible situations that might come from people being in that building.
I'm not sure that's the only county building that's sitting empty, that's, would be considered a liability, that seems to be the focus, though.
We never tear anything down, and they're willing to do it, so.
Do we know how much we spend on it now? Because I know that grass is always nicely cut and trimmed and stuff, I think maybe, you know.
Does the committee, we have a committee in the county on public buildings. Is there a long-range plan for this, is it going to be sold to the private sector? You know, is it going to be repurposed for another purpose that I was prior demolition, or?
So yeah, I was the staff liaison to the infrastructure committee that was in, I guess it was the year twenty twenty, when we met. The building at that point, the committee thought was reusable at this point, it really is not, we have not had any heat or air in that building since at least twenty eighteen. The power is still onto the building, so there, I know there is a small power bill that we're paying, and General Properties does still take care of the grass around it so that it doesn't become unsightly. Um, and then we do, we, I, I believe it's a lease out space to different, the, the tree trimmers come in and park their vehicles there and those kind of things. Um, but otherwise it is not being used, we have not had any youth, sports groups use any of the property, um, in the last two years.
Right, what is the, the future, I mean, how does that fit into the?
I, there, there's still a lot of things up in the air, I was watching the last, um, listening to the last school board meeting, um, about where, what's going to go where, when, and whether or not we're, if this is an elementary school four, is it preschool, is it the two of them together? Um, I think that's still very much up in the air between the school board and the board supervisors. But that location is one of the prime locations they are looking for to place one of those buildings, or both if they build them together.
And Chris, is it the thought of the infrastructure committee or the, or the board, I don't mean to, I should speculate, but that is a liability? The buil, the building itself has become a liability to the county?
Mr. Stroud has brought that up in meetings previously, um, about, worried about the liability of it. Although I do believe fire, rescue, and sheriff's office use it for certain training aspects, um, the Canines use it especially for training, but I can't speak to that a hundred percent.
Right, I understand. I'm, I'm kind of a mindset of Mr. Myers, if we're willing to tear something down, I think it's a nice precedent, because we got a bunch of them we can put in line afterwards. Yeah, it just seems to be a lot of money, it's six hundred thousand dollars to tear it down, if you could put it in a package deal of tear this down and build a new thing.
Build something else, yeah.
You might be able to package it and get a better price than six hundred thousand to go tear down a building. What does the board think, where are we at? I just wanted to go on record and state it, you know, given what we've seen in the past, the board supervisors are going to do what the board supervisors are going to do. And, and our recommendation, if, if they're set to demolish it. Well, I'll, I'll. I may be tilting against wind, we'll see anyway. No, 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 I'll start with you, where, what would you rank it at, Mr. Nicely? I, I put it as a five. And Mr. Decordum? Mr. Fox? Smire?
Three or four, three.
Slattery?
Leaving it at three.
I'd put it at a five.
And Mr. Williams?
I'd say a five as well.
It sounds like we're about four.
I think the fours or the fives have it. Is it four or five?
I'm getting either one.
Necessary is four, which is what it's currently ranked, needed is five. So do you want to bump it down a bracket or leave where it is out of four?
Four?
Should we put it to a vote?
All right, we're between four and five. Who's in for four? You do four. All right, who's in for five? I think five's have it, all right. Excellent. On to the next one, sir.
Item number two for engineering department, renovation of the existing courthouse was ranked as a three, which is necessary. Item number three is the preschool, um, that was ranked as an eight, which is desirable. Moving down to parks and recreation, number one, trailway feasibility study implementation was ranked as an eight, which is desirable. Uh, number two, Sealston Sport Complex Playground was ranked as a si, six, which is needed. Number three, Citizen Center Renovation Projects was ranked as a five, which is needed. Number four, Barnesville Park Wayside Park Master Plan and Construction was ranked as a six, which is also needed. Number five, the Recreation Center was ranked as a seven, which is desirable. Number six, the dog park was ranked as a seven as well, which is desirable. Number seven, the tennis center lighting was ranked as an eight, again desirable. Number eight, Sealston Sport Complex Baseball Lighting, again ranked as desirable at an eight. Number nine, Sedell Brooks Junior Park Irrigation was ranked as a six, which is needed. Um, number ten, Sealston Sport Complex Irrigation was ranked as a five, which is needed. And that'll sum it up for Parks and Rec. Information taken now?
I, I'd like to make two comments on the Parks and Rec submissions there, and, and in full disclosure, I am also on the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee for those, just to put it on record for that. So, uh, my first comment is on the dog park, this is a personal one, my wife would not allow me back in the home if I did not advocate more for the dog park. And I know from the Parks and Rec studies that we have done, that is a very highly desirable, uh, facility that needs to be added to the county. And, uh, I think we need to take a look at that, I don't think it's a one or a two. But, but to have it as low as it is, I think, uh, doesn't, doesn't really match with the county citizens and their desired for facilities. It's a relatively low-cost facility in the grand scheme of things, uh, that would be really useful. My other comment is on the Sealston Sports Irrigation System. The Sealston, uh, fields are used extensively by the county. And, uh, I would like to challenge, uh, Mr. Clark to go back and take a look and possibly refine his cost estimates, which may change some people's opinions about that. It's a very large number at this point, and I can see why people didn't consider it to be very, very useful or, or needed at this time in our, in our budget constraints. But, uh, those fields are not very, by the end of the summer, those fields are in really bad shape. And the irrigation would, I think in the long run, actually save the county some money, so. It's my two cents for the Parks and Rec things, I'd like to see both of those bumped up, but I don't think they will ever get up into the two or three category.
Four puts it one notch up on the irrigation, should we go for four on the bottom irrigation?
I could do that, I could do the irrigation.
Bump it up to a four.
Four, the only one I wanted is Citizen Center. Is in pretty rough shape, I haven't been in there in quite a while, but it was rough last time I went in. Should we, should we move that one to a?
I agree with that.
Four.
Yeah, I could, yeah.
It's eighty-five thousand dollars to spruce it up.
Yeah.
What is the big jump to five hundred thousand?
There's your answer.
We have the answers right here.
There we go, thank you.
Yeah, this year's request with the eighty-five thousand dollars is making the building prettier, fixing doors, carpets, um, continuing our painting plan, those kind of things. The five hundred thousand dollars is the entire parking lot, and that's why that's years out, um, as we also, we also. Yes, but that also involves, um, most likely a stormwater plan and a lot of work with the Department of Community Development, so.
So, so, I'm sorry.
Should we move Citizen Center to three?
I agree with that. As far as your, the, the parking lot, was there any consideration about maybe looking in a building itself, just, just out of curiosity?
So last year we did add rock to the, to the gravel section, um, and I'm now looking, we just got our updated budget report, so now I'm figuring out how much is left and where I need to put stone for different parks and what we can still afford to finish this fiscal year. Um, I'm hoping there'll be the ability to put at least another load in there, just to, really to eliminate the bump. When you come out of the asphalt and you go down into the, into the, into the rock, you bounce pretty hard sometimes, so we're trying to keep that smooth.
How old is that building, do you know?
Uh, originally built in seventy-six, or seventy-eight, seventy-eight, and then rebuilt in eighty-six after the fire.
Rebuilt in eighty-six, okay.
So, so I, I tend to agree that bumping up this a little bit wouldn't hurt, I've been in there a few times in the last several, several months. It's looking worn, and, and every time I go in, there are people in there. So I, I think that would be a good, a good use of a limited amount of funding.
So my response to Mr. Nicely and your, your dog park, um, pitch, um, you, you mentioned that a lot of people, um, but I see the one here.
Well, I, I based that based on, the Parks and Rec actually did go out and do a public survey. They did a web survey, and that came out to be, what was it, Chris, like, second on the desired list? It was pretty high, I don't, I don't have that with me, I could get back to you about that, but it was pretty highly rated, uh, from the web-based survey that, that the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee worked with, with the county to put out, that was.
So the, the percentage of the people who participated?
Excuse me?
A high percentage of people who participated, is what you're saying?
Yes, a high percentage of the people that participated, which is always a bias of.
Correct, it could be a hundred people, it could be a thousand people.
Right.
At least on a percentage, okay.
Sort of like all those people that, that, that go on there and they, they vote for lighting on the tennis and pickleball courts, because it's the people that want to go there. Is there really a good cross-representation? I don't know, we tried to go out and get a public survey, and the dog park was pretty highly rated and desirable. And if you go to almost any other county location that I've been to, there is a dog park of some sort, it's a matter of getting some fencing.
Well, apart from a chain link fence around a piece of land.
Exactly.
What do you get for your hundred thousand dollars for a dog?
That's another one that we could go and sharpen our pencils and get the number down somewhat. The hundred thousand to me seems to be a lot.
Contract.
However, one of the ones that we were looking at was the best, the optimal location for the dog park is at Sealston. Excuse me, at, at the Sedell Brooks Park. Well, if you go look at that land, as I've done many times.
I would think for a hundred thousand dollars, you could get two, one in each corner of the county.
Well, you need a certain amount of land, and if you go to that Sedell Brooks Park, the only place that's really, no, the only place that you really have got a good location for it. I, I seriously, because of my wife, I've gone and looked at this a number of times, Chris knows my wife, she can be pretty strong-willed. And the best place to put it is up there where the old Dog Pound used to be. So part of that process is going to be tearing down the old dog park, the old.
Shelters.
The old dog shelter.
Sounds like we're.
It's just sitting there empty.
Yeah, so it sounds like we're teaching old dogs new tricks.
You were waiting for that one, weren't you?
So I would just like to say, when you put out a survey for Parks and Rec and people tell you what the most important Parks and Rec thing is, you know, I believe that those are, you know, that that's how they're speaking about Parks and Rec. But we're ranking a dog park versus a fire truck. And so.
That's why I was not proposing it be a one or a two, having it bumped up a little.
I love Parks and Rec. I mean, anybody that knows me knows that I think sports enrich, uh, our communities. But I would, I, I would not prioritize a dog park, uh, in a necessary capacity. I think it's still desirable.
I believe it's, it really is as low as a seven, which is where we have it right now. It's at the bottom basement of.
We all have opinions, and I'm not a fan of dog parks, so.
So in Parks and Rec, we have the Citizen Center going to a three and the Sports Con Sealston Irrigation going to a four, correct?
Looking for consensus on the third one there. We were at a five. We heard some fours, then some threes were thrown out. We can bump that up to a three. That is the Citizen Center renovation project.
I think we could do that as three.
Everybody give a three?
Yeah.
I see.
Dog park leaving as is.
Go ahead, sir.
In, information technology, um, request number one, the computer replacement was ranked as a two, which is urgent. Number two, the county.
Can I ask a question? I'd like to ask a question about that one, too. In, in the way the county does its budgeting, can we not have the IT people build into its normal annual budget a certain amount of computer replacements? Is, is something like that really need to be in a CIP type of budgeting process? I, I'm asking our IT person here. You would, you would think you could just build in that every year I'm going to replace X number of computers.
That is the optimal way, but since it's more than $50,000 usually, because we have the computers on a replacement system to maintain new warranties. So if something happens to them, you get parts and service. And when warranties run out, those things aren't guaranteed. So.
I guess then I would have expected this to have an every year, a, just a, a routine budget to replace a certain percentage, but it seems to only have a listing in twenty-five and twenty-six, and then we take a three-year gap before we bother to replace any others.
That is based on the spreadsheet that has the warranties. Other thing that happens is there's new technologies that come, and people may need machines that are upgraded than what they had before. A lot of these, um, applications that our staff is using, they're just growing. And once you have a computer and it's on a four-year cycle, by the second or third year, you might have to replace that earlier because of the applications and the amount of, uh, effort that's needed for the machine to run, for the memory, for the CPU chip, all those kinds of things.
Yeah, please, please don't, don't take, don't think that I'm trying to say you don't need to replace computers on a routine basis. I absolutely believe that you need enough budget to replace the computers and keep them under warranty and keep their applications working and all that stuff. It's just whether it's really a CIP thing or should be rolled into an annual budget.
I would like to.
That's, that's a budgeting process. Being the new person, I'm not sure exactly that's the best place to put it.
I would like to do that, but I think they told me to start putting in a CIP because my regular operating budget is so high. Because I pay for all the phones, most of the internet services. And my budget is very, very high now. Was not like that.
If, if, if this is the appropriate place to put it, I'm fine with keeping it a high priority because I think it is a priority. It's just whether this is really the appropriate place.
Yeah, in the beginning, it wasn't, but they said since my budget was going up so much to put some of it in the CIP. So that's what I've been doing ever since.
Again, I find myself agreeing. It's, it's necessary for the efficient operation of the county's government. But I see it more as an operations cost than a CIP. But if this is the only place it can go right now, I guess this is where it goes. But, and I would certainly like to argue with the administration that it ought to be in your budget, your, your annual budget.
We will put that in, uh, obviously, we're now put that in the record that hopefully next year, maybe with Mr. Dons, we can get that not more, um, a more, uh, predictable annual budget, if you will.
We'll move on to request number two, uh, County Cisco Network Equipment Upgrades. That was ranked as a four, which is necessary. And then the final request, the Board AV, Boardroom AV upgrades was ranked as a five, which is needed.
All right, everybody comfortable with those? All right, let's, uh, now we just put it to vote.
Subject to these proposed amendments, we would need a motion and a vote to forward your recommendation to the board.
Get a motion with, uh, changes incorporated, please.
Uh, I'm, go ahead.
I make a motion that we forward the CIP recommendations with the amendments made it, with the amendments made to the board of, to the board of supervisors.
Which has been made, seconded. Those have been made and seconded. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Thank you all. All right, on to new business. Case number twenty-five dash oh five dash W zero one amendment to chapter five point five, Article one of the King George County Wetlands Ordinance to include Division Four Coastal Primary Sand Dune Ordinance to align with Sections twenty-eight dot two dash fourteen oh three as required by Virginia Code. We are looking for a request for a public hearing on this one.
Mr. Chairman, I'll give a brief overview. Back in two thousand and twenty-three, the General Assembly passed Senate Bill eleven sixty. This pertains to public hearing requirements for both model tidal wetlands and coastal primary sand dunes and beach ordinances. Then the provision that this follows, which is statute twenty-eight point two dash one four oh three, requires localities to adopt this amended ordinance. It states that any county or city that has adopted a coastal primary sand dune zoning ordinance prior to January first, twenty twenty-four, shall amend their ordinance to confirm to the ordinance contained herein by January first, twenty twenty-four. According to the Virginia Marine Resources Commission, King George County became a coastal sand and dune locality back in two thousand and eight. Frankly, this was just something that was overlooked during the ordinance overhaul when we separated this document. So yes, the recommendation from staff here is to schedule a public hearing for this case.
I make a recommendation.
I guess I, I have one question. I, I, I'm not opposed to the, to the, to the, your motion to have a public hearing. I think that's required. But as I read through this, it says that you may adopt this ordinance. Didn't say that you have to. I included in the list.
I had the same questions both for our legal counsel as well as for the chief of the Habitat Division. They corrected me and said that we need to do this.
You may choose not to adopt it, but, but then your wetlands board is going to not be able to operate. So this is a requirement if you want to continue to have your wetlands board operating.
Do we have any areas in the county that are, that are designated as primary sand dunes?
I can't answer that question, but there, there are certain sandy areas that they consider to be a dune area. The upshot of this is their updated notice requirements. It goes now from two weeks to a week, and there were a couple of other minor changes. And I have to admit, this was my bill that I carried for an agency. It really is just a perfunkery thing.
Okay. I guess I was just looking at it. I didn't see anything looking at the definition of sand dunes that I thought fit in King George County.
You already updated the other part of it in the overhaul, and that was due. And this just didn't get done, and we caught it, and so we need to do this.
So essentially.
So just procedure, I'm sorry.
It's just perfunk. Right, right.
I mean, if, if we didn't adopt, just for the sake of argument, wouldn't we continue to fall back on the, the current regime that's in place?
So currently, our wetlands board is inactive because we do not have this ordinance in effect. They can do organizational stuff, but they do not have the ability to act on any cases that are raw form. So this has happened in actually sev- several other localities. What happens is since our wetland board cannot entertain it, we have to send that to the commission. That commission being Virginia Marine Resources Commission, that they have to handle it.
So does that mean by default, we're already in a sense complying with it now?
We are not in compliance with this now.
Right.
Halfway.
The state's in compliance. We're not.
There were two sections there. Um, I want to say it was twenty-eight oh two dash, I think it was thirteen oh three. And then this one, we caught the other one. We did not catch this one.
So again, the, uh, the topic on the table is for a hearing. We're not really arguing the merits of it right now, but if we can.
That's fine. Should, should it be a joint? Do we need to have that be a joint hearing with us and the wetlands board?
Before we get too, too far on this, it looks like we have five public hearings.
Oh, no. There was an amendment to the agenda.
Oh, there's an amendment. Okay. That sounds good. So I make a motion that we have a public hearing in June for case number twenty-four dash zero five dash W zero one.
Motion's been made.
Seconded a motion?
Seconded it all in favor. Motion passes unanimously. All right, the next item on the new business agenda is case number twenty-four dash zero five dash SW zero one. Amendment to chapter five point five, Article two, the King George County Stormwater Ordinance to replace the article with DEQVESMP model ordinance consistent with Sections sixty-two point one dash forty-four dot one five. Tax twenty-seven is required by Virginia Code, and we are again looking for a request for public inform, or public hearing, rather. And Mr. Stewart, any additional information on that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll give another brief overview. This was a while in the making. So back in June twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, the State Water Control Board met, and essentially what they did is they approved and adopted this new streamlined ordinance. It's called the Virginia Erosion Cement Management, or VESM regulation, and repealed pretty much all the other ones that everybody's been acting off of. So. Title sixty-two point one dash forty-four fifteen, Section twenty-seven requires that any locality that operate a regulated MS four or that administers a Virginia Stormwater Management Program, which we do as of July first, uh, twenty seventeen, shall be required to adopt and administer a VESMP consistent with the provision of this article that regulates any land disturbing activity that one disturbs 10,000 square feet or more, or two disturbs 2,500 square feet or more in the area of locality design as the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act. The latter pertains to King George County. So again, this is a recommendation to schedule a public hearing. This, this is what everything will be based off of come July first, twenty twenty-four.
All right, looking for a request for public hearing. Motion?
Make a motion that we have a public hearing in June on case number twenty-four dash zero five SW zero one.
Motion's been made.
Seconded a motion?
Seconded. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all. For the record, the amendment to the agenda, the next two, uh, items, uh, for public hearing requests have been struck from the agenda, which brings us to the director's report. Mr. Stewart, over to you, sir.
Good line, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. To kick off the report, I'm going to start by welcoming your new commission member. This is Mr. Brent Maffett. He was appointed at the May seventh board meeting. Mr. Maffett will be representing the Dowager District. Unfortunately, he was not be able to attend tonight. Also, secondly, you notice I finally got some people sitting beside me here. So I'll take a moment to introduce the department's new planner, which is Ms. Bootsy Duthill here at the end. Her first day was May eighth, and she's doing a great job. We'd also like to welcome our new building inspector, Charles Bullock. Or if you come by, you'll hear us referring to him as Bootsy. Bootsy transferred from Stafford County. He has an extensive background in the building department. He's been doing this for quite a few years. He's doing very well and already conducting inspections. Also, Austin Schuman, who was the environmental inspector, his last day with the department was May seventh. He was an asset to our apartment, and we wish him well in his endeavors. And currently, the department has completed conducting interviews for this position, and we will be extending offers within this week. So we had a good turnaround on this one. Moving forward into the permit intake with the month of February, the department permitted twenty new single-family dwellings, did five hundred and eight inspections and a hundred and seven total permits with a monthly revenue of $64,000 for, uh, $362.71. For the month of March, the department permitted twelve new single-family dwellings, did 522 inspections, one hundred and fourteen total permits for a monthly revenue of $68,696.48. This brings our year-to-date revenue to $604,832.14. Under the new applications, the department received Oakwood Estates Section Five. This is a major subdivision located on Tax Map twenty-five parcel sixty. This is extension off of a Utopia Way. That's the Eden View subdivision, as well as a direct access off of Eden Drive. There's forty-one single-family residential lots, Zone A two cluster. All lots will be served by private water and sewer. This is the same company that's done Oakwood Estates on the other side of the road. This will be immediately adjacent to it. So it'll be across from the road on the eastern side, and it will border the Eden View subdivision. Upcoming planning commission agenda items, we now have two public hearings for your June eleventh date. I look forward to those. And then to cap it off, too, Mr. Lynch kind of stole my thunder here, but probably seen on the old Facebook or some of these blogs floating around in Fredericksburg that I have resigned from my position. So this will actually be my last meeting with the commission. Taking opportunity to thank you here. I mean, it's, it's been an eventful several years here. Thank you for your dedication to the county and more so, um, in supporting me. I know I'm in change here. We'll say lack of staff or exciting cases or whatever it may be that I can come up with as an excuse. I may have not done things the way that you were accustomed to, but you've been very appreciative and very supportive. So I wanted to thank you for that. And that will conclude my directorship.
Excellent. Well, Mr. Stewart, thank you for your service. Excellent, excellent job. I know you inherited a lot of work and a small staff, and I think you've done a wonderful job. And I know it's been brought to my attention that there's some comments made out there on the social media pages, but, uh, I'll just say that those people are unaware of what you, uh, what you've accomplished and the work, the great work that you've done for the county. So thank you for everything you've done, um, and, and best of luck in all of your future endeavors. And I'm sure you'll do exceptionally well. So thank you for everything. All right, other business, none, which brings us to the best part of the evening. The adjournment, uh, looking for a motion to adjourn until eleven June twenty twenty-four at seven PM. Oh, nobody's made a motion yet.
I make a motion. We adjourn to, uh, Tuesday, June eleventh.
Motion's been made.
Second.
All right, all in favor? All right, thank you all. Have a good evening. Motion is passed, and we are closing up the show.
Yes.